Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the September 16, 2025 work session to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for purposes of rebroadcasting. All board members are in attendance with the exception of Ms. Austin and Ms. Shonda. We'll now move to recognition of guests and scheduled speakers. Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, we have a number of guests and scheduled speakers. We're going to start with Assistant Superintendent Dr. Jason Sorgini with a quick verbal update on the Audubon Elementary School property. Dr. Sorgini?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi, and good evening, members of the board. I am pleased to provide an update on the sale of the Audubon Elementary School property. On September 3 of this year, a public hearing was held before Judge Page in Montgomery County Court in Narstown. At the conclusion of that hearing, Judge Page issued a ruling approving the sale of the property to WB Homes. That order has already been sent to WB Homes, which then allows the next phase of the process to move forward. WB Homes has now entered their 120-day period of inspection, which will conclude on January 4 of 2026. At the end of that period, if WB Homes is satisfied, the district will receive two deposits: the release of the initial escrow of $75,000, and then, along with that, will be a second deposit in the amount of $125,000. Once the district receives that $200,000, it does become nonrefundable. A third deposit of $125,000 will then be due from WB five days after they receive preliminary subdivision approval from the township. Looking ahead, the final closing on the property must occur within 60 days after all conditions in the agreement are met, or sooner if WB were to choose to waive them. The agreement requires that closing take place no later than July of 2027, with the possibility of a six-month extension if there were to be a moratorium on sewer or water connections that would take place. So, in summary, Judge Page approved on July 3 the allowance of the transaction to proceed. WB has received the court's order, and they are now moving forward in their period of inspection, and the district is moving forward under the timelines established in the agreement, and we will continue to update the board along the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sorgini. Any questions for members of the board to my left? Ms. Perdue?
I just want to clarify, you said July 2027 for the closing?
No later than July of 2027, anticipating that it could take up to that long for the process to move forward.
And just to confirm, that's the timeline that we had in our original agreement?
That's correct.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions to my left? Seeing none to my right? Seeing none. Thank you, Dr. Sorgini. Next on the agenda again is Dr. Sorgini and Mr. Kenwood, our Director of Facilities with the 10-Year Master Facilities Plan. This was the plan that was presented at the Property Committee meeting in September of this year. Dr. Sorgini, Mr. Kenwood?
Thank you again, Dr. Zerbi, and good evening again, members of the board. This presentation provides an overview of Methacton School District's 10-Year Capital Improvement Plan. Reviewed in part by the board in June of 2025, the plan focuses on a systems-based approach to maintaining safe, functional, and future-ready school facilities. While a comprehensive Methacton High School campus project proceeds on a parallel track, this plan ensures that critical infrastructure investments, particularly, as we've said before, those that support warm, safe, and dry learning environments, continue uninterrupted across all buildings in the district. Next slide, please. On this slide, you will see the totality of the 10-year plan broken out by building and by year, with all projects totaling $59.1 million. And board members, you have a copy of that at your place. Next slide, please. In June 2025, the Methacton Board of School Directors reviewed the first three years of the district's 10-Year Capital Improvement Plan. This presentation outlines the broader vision behind that phased strategy, a vision grounded in proactive systems management and long-term sustainability. Simultaneously, as we've said before, the district is advancing plans for a significant Methacton High School campus project. Recognizing the scale and impact of that endeavor, this 10-year capital plan is intentionally designed to run concurrently, ensuring infrastructure needs at all other facilities remain addressed and do not fall behind. Together, these coordinated efforts represent a balanced and strategic approach to facility stewardship across the district. Next slide, please. At the heart of this model is a commitment to preserving the physical integrity and operational reliability of every school building. Rather than targeting individual buildings in isolation, the plan prioritizes three core facility systems: mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, commonly referred to as MEP, roofing systems, and critical site infrastructure such as drive lanes and parking surfaces. These are the foundational systems that sustain safe and functional learning environments. And again, by focusing on these areas, we ensure that every facility remains warm, safe, and dry, not just today, but for years to come. Next slide, please. Ensuring appropriate indoor climate conditions is a fundamental aspect of a safe and productive learning environment. Throughout this 10-year plan, significant investments are directed towards upgrading and replacing aging HVAC systems, boilers, chillers, and associated mechanical infrastructure. Eagleville Elementary will see substantial upgrades through a chiller replacement and selective HVAC modernization totaling over $3 million. Woodland Elementary will benefit from new rooftop HVAC units and supporting infrastructure. At Warsester and on the Arcola Skyview complex, comprehensive MEP upgrades and control system improvements account for over $20 million in phased investments. These upgrades will enhance energy efficiency, improve air quality, and ensure that classrooms remain warm in winter, cool in summer or late spring, and conducive to learning year-round. Next slide, please. Safety extends beyond the walls of our buildings. The plan recognizes the need to maintain secure, accessible, and navigable school grounds for all users, including students, staff, visitors, and emergency responders. Several schools, including Eagleville, Woodland, and Warsester, are slated for asphalt seal coating and mill and overlay work to address cracked and deteriorating surfaces. These improvements reduce tripping hazards, support traffic flow, and extend the lifespan of the existing pavement. In addition, $515,000 has been allocated district-wide for the installation of security bollards, enhancing perimeter protection in high-traffic pedestrian areas. Critical elevator modernizations across four campuses also occurs. This work reflects the district's ongoing commitment to physical safety, accessibility, and compliance with applicable codes and standards. Next slide, please. Water intrusion is one of the most common and costly threats to educational facilities. Aging roofs compromise not only building envelope, but also internal systems, instructional technology, and even air quality. This plan incorporates strategic roof replacements at multiple sites over the next decade. Skyview Upper Elementary, for instance, will receive a $4 million roof replacement. Woodlands 2008 roof section is scheduled for renewal at a cost of approximately $1.35 million. Warsester will receive a complete roof and masonry repair project estimated at $1.6 million. Even auxiliary buildings like the transportation facility are included with roof coatings to preserve structural longevity. These proactive measures are designed to minimize emergency repairs, control moisture infiltration, and protect the district's physical and financial resources. Next slide, please. Over the next 10 years, the Methacton School District will invest approximately $59.1 million into preserving and enhancing its facilities through this Capital Improvement Plan. The timeline has been strategically developed to align with the financial pacing of the district's broader budgetary framework while complementing the high school campus project. Notably, the most financially intensive years are scheduled for 2032 and 2035, coinciding with major system upgrades across multiple buildings. This allows for adequate financial planning and resource allocation without overburdening the district in any single fiscal cycle. By combining fiscal discipline with a systems-focused approach, the district ensures that every capital investment yields long-term operational value, educational continuity, and sustained safety for students and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kenwood and Dr. Sorgini. Are there questions from members of the board to my left on anything that was presented? Ms. Cancrow?
No, no questions because we looked through that through property. But I really do appreciate when you broke it down by prioritizing system-focused approach. Because as I look at this, I'm like, okay, are you looking at all the buildings through each system? And I know you are, but I don't see what you're all the work that you're doing. But this is great. So I really do appreciate the whole work that you've done. I want to keep my eyes on the only, only one that I always think about is transportation and that building. Just always want to keep my eyes on that. But overall, thank you for this plan.
Any other questions to my left? Ms. Perdue?
No, thank you also. And this is always helpful to have. I think when I look at this, the only, and I'll ask the question because on here, and I'm looking at this one, is listed as Capital Improvement Plan. So then we have nothing for Arrowhead in 10 years at all? Or is it that it falls out of scope in reference to what, how you're defining Capital Improvement Plan?
We do not have anything planned for Arrowhead during this timeframe.
So do we have any small projects for Arrowhead that falls under a different plan also then?
We'll likely have summer admin projects at Arrowhead, but from a system standpoint, given that the building is new, there aren't any systems that will need to be replaced within that 10-year plan.
So even the district-wide, the one that we have for the security bollards, we don't have anything, we don't need to do any?
It does include Arrowhead.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And then I just had a quick one in reference to the high school. I was looking at the artificial turf replacement and the track resurfacing. And I know we've had, recently had, an email in reference to the use of artificial turf. And, but I know that project is also, I guess it's later for 2027. Is there any way to look into this a little bit more to, and I don't know if it was already being discussed at property or anything, but I'm just wondering if we've looked into this and this is the best way to proceed, or have we looked at our options for it?
We have looked and will continue to look. At this time, you know, judging by the industry, both at the major league level and the collegiate level, as well as the high school level, turf fields are, have been determined to be safe. So that is the direction that the district has gone in, but we will certainly continue to look at that as we move closer to the project.
Okay, thank you. And I also agree in reference to the transportation. I think it looks like our projects that are a little bit, maybe starting in 2028. So I think it's definitely one that we want to make sure we're keeping an eye on just because there may be, I don't know what the plans are for that. So just keep an eye on that. But thank you.
There were a few projects that we actually broke into two components. If there was some system that was a higher priority, we moved that up and broke it out from the balance of the system. So that's why you'll see the roofing at the transportation facility earlier in the plan, and then the interior work and the site work a little, a few years later.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much. This is really easy to understand, and thank you for this layout. Actually, Ms. Perdue asked all the questions that I was going to ask. So thanks, Ms. Perdue.
Questions to my right? Ms. Cleary?
Yeah, I want to follow up on Ms. Perdue's comment about, it's really the email that she's referring to, or we actually heard it at the actual board meeting relative to PFOS. So I think my request is that when we do start to talk about this project in property, if we could talk about the materials that we're considering using. I do a lot of work with that in my job outside of here, and I just think it's, I think it's worth a discussion. It would allow the public to come express any concerns that they might have. And so I just asked for that. My other question was relative to the roof, and I apologize since I wasn't in property at the meeting, but the Skycola roof replacement in 2026, is how old is, is that portion of the roof?
That roof system is actually, or was, part of Arcola. And when Skyview was built, it was annexed, and is actually now part of Skyview. So I don't have the exact date, but it is older and beyond our warranty at this point. And we've had some active leaks in that area, and that's why we're targeting.
It doesn't have a good rating, I imagine?
It does not.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Druiners?
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Cleary asked that. I just to clarify, so that is the Skycola section and not the newer part of Skyview? Okay. Okay. You answered this for me at the property committee, but the inflationary factor, so the $59.1 million already includes escalation costs to get to, okay, thank you. And then Eagleville, the chiller replacement. So refresh my memory, is that was not captured in the project we did about five years ago?
It was not, no. The, we've had two data points or input on that chiller. One came through the Bureau Veritas study, and one from the manufacturer, and both recommended that we look to replace that in the next year or two. And that was one of the projects that we broke out. So originally, it was deeper or later in the plan, and we broke that cost out, reduced the portion later in the plan, and moved it up.
Any other questions from, to my right? Seeing none. Thank you, Dr. Sorgini, and thank you, Mr. Kenwood. Next on the agenda for guests and scheduled speakers, we have Ms. Steffi, who will be talking about the capital borrowing plan and budget projection updates. So as Ms. Steffi proceeds to the podium, I just want to kind of set the stage for everyone on this. This evening, Ms. Steffi will be sharing a budget forecast inclusive of new debt for each of the proposed high school renovation options. She will conclude from her forecast that the district cannot, again, cannot manage the large amount of debt required in the construction period, typically three years. She will also conclude that taking on any of these renovation options will negate, alone, will negate the work described in the Master Facilities Plan just moments before. As to following Ms. Steffi's presentation, we can share that these options will still have merit, but will require a longer period of time for renovation and borrowing to better manage within the forecasted budget. She will share how much the district could borrow while addressing the Master Facilities Plan and approaching one of these proposed high school options in a phased-in or by-project approach. So as Ms. Steffi starts presenting these options, you know, the financials associated with option 1A, 1B, 2A, and 2B, the models include all the same assumptions that we outlined in the May 21, 2025 presentation. And at the back of this presentation, she included an appendix with those assumptions. We're not going over them this evening, but we have them for your review. But there are, there are three changes to those assumptions from that period of time. We've taken into account the revised 2026-27 Act 1 index. It was previously estimated at 3.7% Act 1 index. It's now at 3.5. We also updated the May presentation on this projection to reflect the final 2025-26 approved budget. And we applied a new draw schedule for the three years of construction in the four years of borrowing. Again, each of these proposed high school renovation options have a construction timeline of approximately three years, with borrowing at best being over four years. And each of the renovation options borrowing only for the high school would place the district at risk of running large deficits. Ms. Steffi?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. As Dr. Zerbi stated, the financial model for the renovation borrowing scenarios is based on the same assumptions presented in May, included at the end of the PowerPoint as Appendix A, with two exceptions. The 26-27 Act 1 index has now been finalized at 3.5%, revised from originally projected at 3.7%. And the expenditure and revenue figures have been updated to reflect the 25-26 final budget amounts. For purposes of long-range affordability, the model continues to use the projected Act 1 index in future years. The intent of these forecasts is to evaluate affordability. All four scenarios begin with surpluses in 26, 27, and 27, 28. As debt ramps up in years three to five of the model, the deficits become unsustainable. Option 1A, $144 million borrowing over four years for high school renovation project only. You can see an initial surplus in years one and two. By year three, rising debt payments create structural deficits until year nine, when we return to a surplus. The 10-year cumulative deficit for option 1A is $4.7 million. Next slide. Option 1B, $152 million borrowing over four years for high school renovation project only. Option 1B presents a slightly higher initial debt load than scenario one, and again, you will see a surplus in years one and two. By year three, rising debt payments again create structural deficits. The 10-year cumulative deficit for option 2B is $9.1 million. Next slide. Option 2A, $170 million borrowing over four years for the high school renovation project only. Same story as option 1A and 1B. We see a surplus in years one and two. By year three, rising debt payments create structural deficits. The increased borrowing results in material larger deficits in the later years. The 10-year cumulative deficit for option 2A is $18.1 million. Next slide. Option 2B, $176 million borrowing over four years for the high school renovation project only. This is the largest short-term borrowing option. Same story here. You see a surplus in years one and two. By year three, rising debt payments create structural deficits. The 10-year cumulative deficit of option 2B is $20.8 million. As you can see, each of the four scenarios results in deficits beginning after year two. While the district experiences short-term surpluses in years one and two, the rapid increase in debt service outpaces projected revenue growth, creating deficits. The higher the borrowing level, the larger and more unsustainable the deficits become over the 10-year period. It is important to note that the reason we see surpluses in years one and two across all models despite the issuance of new debt is that the district has already begun budgeting debt capacity for the high school project. Next slide. On slide six, you will see a model that projects $180 million borrowing spread over 10 years. The model layers in debt more gradually as existing debt falls off. That pacing makes the deficits in years four through nine more manageable. In year one, we see a surplus of $726,152. In year two, a surplus of $661,088. In year three, the surplus falls to $117,876. From years four to nine, deficits start at $599,544, an increase to $1.2 million as debt levels flatten out, then fall to $435,764 in year nine. The forecast ends in year 10 with a surplus of $138,654. The 10-year cumulative deficit of the $180 million borrowing is $2.1 million, which can be managed through the use of fund balance, either from the Capital Reserve or the General Fund if needed. Next slide. Turning to slide seven, this shows how construction costs could look if we assume $180 million is available for the high school renovation and the 10-Year Master Facilities Plan. For example, in year one, a $15 million borrowing is projected. With $5.5 million applied to master plan projects leaves $9.4 million for the high school renovation. Year two, $35 million borrowing would allocate $4.3 million to master plan projects and $30.6 million for the high school renovation. In year three, another $35 million borrowing is projected with $1.1 million for capital projects and $33.9 million for high school renovation. The same logic continues across through year 10. The total borrowing across the 10-year model equals $180 million, supporting local projects costing $184 million. Total project costs are slightly more than total borrowings in this projection, but can be funded through the Capital Reserve Fund if necessary. That concludes my presentation.
So, just to run a final comment with all of this, the purpose of these slides was really to illustrate not an exact science of what will happen in the future, but to forecast a prediction based on the knowledge and information that we have available to us today, and tried to best predict the risk associated with making any decisions going forward. So this 10-year forecast, and the experts will tell us this, that it's highly unpredictable, that we can predict that far in advance financially and do it really well. But this is the best we can do at this point. I think it's to inform the board as we proceed forward with making decisions about Master Facilities Plan or the high school or both together. But the most important part is that this forecast and the slides representing the impact to the budget for options 1A, 1B, 2A, and 2B really indicate that the forecast, using shorter increments like two to three years of decisions, where renovations of the high school and projects under Facilities Master Plan can be planned smaller and more manageable at chunks, all targeting a potential future outcome that could be similar in the future. six, eight, possibly 10 years, similar to that of what you would see in the 2A or 2B scenario. If over that period of time, we continue to be able to afford those those renovations and projects along that path. So with that said, I I think it's maybe proper to open up any questions on on the information that Ms. Steffey has provided, as well as even having a little bit of the dialogue associated with our ability to, you know, talk about, does the high school make, you know, does renovation of the high school make sense in being able to pare this down into what we're considering projects that are that are sequenced towards a more long-term plan? So I'll open the floor up if anybody wants to make any comments about or questions about any of the the stuff we presented so far. If we're not, I know you're seeing this for the first time, many of you, I'll be glad to, you know, answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that my assumption is along the right lines because not even looking at 1A, but the baseline cost that we had discussed 120 is 120, like Warm Safe Drive baseline, 128.5 million. That's stuff that like that doesn't fit, that doesn't math either, correct? That would make sense to assume that that would not work either, the Warm Safe Drive cost. Right? I just wanted to check my assumption. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions to my left, to my right? Mr. Mersky?
So with page seven, you're assuming in this 10-year scenario that we're borrowing $125 million for the high school renovation and $59 million for the 10-year capital plan that we just went over, correct?
Correct. They worked backwards from the master facilities plan.
So that doesn't, that doesn't even get us to 1A, correct? I just point that out.
Ms. Graff?
I think that it does get us to 1A. Correct me if I'm wrong, perhaps. Total project budget for the option baseline was 109 million, and then for option 1A is 125. The additional scope, which is below the line, brought us to 140, 125 and 128, 144. Is that not correct? Since our engineer is sitting in the audience, he could probably answer that question.
Good evening, everybody. Okay, so the baseline scope inclusive of soft costs and contingency excluding those additional scope items for consideration would be 100, just shy of 113 million with the additional scope. And again, that was mostly related to finish replacements with flooring casework. That would take it to 128.5 million under the baseline. Option 1A without the additional items would be at 128 million and obviously, you know, higher up to 144 with those additions under option 1A.
Can you, can you just check that? Because I think that's the updated version with the change in the classrooms. I think that the original version that I have dated 9/12 has 109 and 125. Those are the original estimates that were provided.
These numbers were were updated on the 11th, September 11th, in preparation for this meeting, and they do include adjustments of a reduction of 7,000 square feet of classroom space from new construction. So these numbers are slightly different than what you had seen at the last board meeting.
So that said, I guess at the 112 number for the baseline scope, does, how do we come up with the numbers that are in the row labeled high school renovation? The 9,451,030, 30,000, 30,605?
So I backed into those numbers. So like the master facilities plan is a known, so as it was presented tonight, that $5.5 million would be allocated to projects, known projects on the master facilities plan. So that $9.4 million is backed into, and that might not necessarily be $9.4 million in the 25-26 school year. It could be the 26-27 school year, but that I backed into that number.
So so we're, the the calculations were basically done with, if we borrow 35 million, we allocate a certain amount of that for the high school master facilities plan. And then what's left you attributed to the high school renovation?
Correct.
So then in year six, there's a zero for the high school renovation. Is there a reason for that?
Well, like I said, I backed into the number using the master facilities plan. So the known debt issued in year 2930, $25 million, that would cover the 10-year master facilities plan in 2930 and then 3031. And then $17 million in 2930 for the high school, which again, could be spread over the, over the two years. It's, you know.
So are you saying that there is no available debt in 203031?
So if we project, if all of the debt is borrowed as projected in years one through five, there would be no debt issuance in that year, correct?
I think you're, I think you're answering a different question than what I'm asking. So let me ask it, let me ask it again a different way. If I want to borrow 25 million in year six, can I borrow 25 million in year six?
We could not afford to borrow 25 million in year six. It would create a larger deficit, and it's, the borrowing happens the next year because that's when we have large amounts of debt that fall off. And then also in year 3435, again, we have a large amount of debt that falls off. So that makes it affordable for us at that point.
So let me ask a different question. If I shifted everything from year two back a year, so year two moves to year three, year three moves to year four, year four moves to year five, et cetera, can I borrow in year six?
If you're, if we're keeping capacity in the budget for debt, we could borrow in year six. But if you let that capacity fall off?
Then you can't because you can't make up the difference.
We wouldn't make up the difference, correct?
Okay. So I guess what I'm saying is if I didn't borrow the 35 million in year two, can I move it back to year six?
You can, you can shift the debt as long as you keep the capacity there.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
And I think to your, to your comments, Ms. Graff, this is only an example. And and it's trying to, it's trying to make sure that we have a reasonable budget forecast that we we know we could afford and, you know, can it be more or less in one year or the next? Like they can, but 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 compared the the 10-year project against the budget impact of the other four options where all the borrowing is done in in a short period of time, that's, that's the, that's really the conversation to make sure that everybody understands that piece. Sure.
Are these, what, when you ran the the models for the high school project, can you tell us what the amounts were each year for the draw schedule? Because they're not, I don't see them on your chart, but maybe I'm missing them.
They're not listed. I do have them, not in my head, unfortunately.
I'm assuming they don't match the numbers on the last page, the 35, 35, 30, 25. I'm, I'm assuming they're significantly different than that.
Yes.
Okay. Could you let us know what they are when you get them?
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions to my right, to my left? Ms. Kankro?
I guess going off with what Mr. Mersky was saying, though, then tonight we should be really kind of, am I assuming that like 1A, we have to look at phasing of 1A is kind of what we're assuming with this? Like, I don't want to create interpretation, but that's kind of what we're, if we're thinking about being financially sound, 1A in a phase approach over six years or actually seven years would be the way to approach this project. I know you can't say whether you recommend it or not, but that's the scenario that I'm that you use, right, for your budget is the 1A, right? So it's not like we did 1B and you created a 10-year financial projection, a 2A or 2B. This is definitely the 1A number.
Well, these numbers are not based on any of the options that were presented.
Okay. It just comes very close to. So that makes you start to think.
Yeah, we, we asked our financial advisors, we said, you know, can you help us identify the maximum amount we can borrow in a given year over a 10-year period of time? And it allowed us to put the the numbers that she shared in here. And then, as she mentioned, she took the known being the high school master, or I'm sorry, the master facilities plan numbers and subtracted that from the the maximum estimate to get what we can invest in the high school. And that, it's similar to what's in this, what's in this estimates from Mr. Grace and CHA, but it wasn't based on that.
Yes, thank you.
And I, yep, Mr. Mersky?
So I just point one other thing out. So so basically, the recommendations, the model that you list on page seven is based on the projected borrowing that's on page six, correct?
Correct.
You're using the borrowing rates in table that is on page six. So basically, that means that we're not, to Ms. Graff's point, we're not able to borrow additional funds until year 10. And then I assume the debt starts to drop back off that that we've taken out. So if you project out further than that, that, well, in this case, surplus number gets bigger.
Yeah, it starts, it's, it flattens out. So as you see, the deficit decreased, it flattens out then through year 30.
At roughly that rate, or you're not sure?
The debt stays level. I think it's about $13.1 million.
Okay.
That will stay level through year 30.
So so, okay. So if you assume.
That's assuming if we don't borrow.
Yeah, if you assume the the same incremental Act One Index rate and the same inherent budget growth through operating expenses, then that means that your ability to borrow funds grows after, in year 10 and on. That's what it means. It's not flat. I mean, the debt is flat.
The debt is flat.
But your capacity to borrow increases.
Correct.
My, my point is, is that.
There may be capacity after year 10 to borrow additional funds. Correct.
But again, that means that we have 120 under this, these assumptions. We have 125 million to spend for our high school renovations, however we want to do it. Right? And the total for just baseline is 100, well, without the additional scope is 112, 113 So what we talked about in property, which was pursuing like 2B, spread over 10 to 12 years, you wouldn't be able to build, tear down the west wing and rebuild the entrance and that that part, those parts of the building until after 10 years. You'd, you'd be able to do renovations to the existing high school, upgrades, and you'd have to wait probably for five years or longer, depending on the operating budget and, you know, revenue, to be able to borrow enough money to be able to build, to to do that kind of a renovation.
Yeah, that, that, I, I think you're correct in terms of the, the general understanding that the challenge is, as I said earlier, it's hard to predict 10 years.
But that's what we discussed also. I mean, you have to do it in a way that you could stop until you're able to afford, right?
Yeah. And so, and so one of the the nice things about what the design team has done, at least up to this point, is they've, they've said, you know, we have four options, including the baseline, that obviously all those options theoretically need to be more refined, but generally speaking, they're, they're built upon each other. So you could, you could theoretically say, you know, somewhere in the future, so long as we don't, you know, create a plan that, that, that builds on top of something already built, you theoretically could say, you know, you could get the 2B at some point or, but, but, you know, the work that you're doing along the way that you can financially manage and you can, in terms of risk to the budget, is, it can be planned in smaller chunks and can be better managed. In the end, I, I will say that, and again, this, the experts will, will either have to agree or not agree to this, in the end, you know, 170-some-million-dollar project as is presented here today might be a $200 million project 10 years from now in total. It may, it may cost us more just because of sheer escalation. But, you know, that, that, that doesn't mean we shouldn't do something. It means that we can only do what we can afford to do. Other questions? Any other questions, Ms. Theo?
Yeah, I just have, it's not really a question. It's more of just a thought of answers needed down the line. In previous conversations, when we've discussed lengthening projects, there are parts to the Warm Safe Drive Plan that cover the whole building, like, I might say this wrong, the HVAC system, right? And so I guess what I will need to see is what that means and how that's, what the recommendation would be for addressing that in a way that makes sense, because that's a whole building thing. So I guess that that's just something that I don't fully understand in the 10-year plan. But I know that it still needs to be talked. So I'm just saying, that's something I, I'll need to see and understand later on.
No, that's an excellent point. And I just want the board to be aware that we, we've only recently begun having the conversations associated with breaking these options down into potential smaller projects. And as such, you know, we, we were starting, you know, the meat of that conversation actually tomorrow. So we, it's our goal to make sure that we start developing those conversations, developing the sequencing associated with that, you know, the cost, all of those pieces, so that we can, you know, come back to the board and say, okay, here's, here's the the best you can do in terms of project one, and the most appropriate thing to stay Warm Safe Dry or or address the issues that are, that are associated within your priority list. Other comments, questions? Mr. Winters?
Yeah, just for clarification, we did, we have this preliminary cost estimates, Josh. And I think Ms. Graff was asking a little bit about this, and you said there were some changes. But what Dr. Zerby just said, 170 million might become 200. But I believe, at least in the, what we saw last month, the three- or four-year aspect has gone escalation. It's years five through 10, 12 that does not, or does it? That's, I'm trying to make sure I understand if these costs that we're seeing now on preliminary costs are being escalated beyond a four-year timeframe.
The, the numbers that have been presented to date do include escalation for the duration of what we figured was a, a contiguous project. In other words, it wasn't broken up over 10 years. What we did is we take escalation factors into the midpoint of what we assume the construction timeframe is to account for material deliveries up into about the midpoint of construction. So that's how we factored in escalation into the overall budget. The budget does, obviously, having said that, does include escalation, again, for a project of.
For a four-year timeframe, not a time.
Correct.
Okay.
But it was through your construction. Yeah, yeah.
It's actually four years of inflation. Yep.
So, you know, I, we can take another question. What I was going to suggest is, since we are talking about the sheet, we probably should have Mr. Grace present this information so that we can be all up to speed on this. And the, and the challenge is we're, we're kind of working in tandem with a couple of different things. So the borrowing doesn't necessarily meet the, some of this. So Ms. Graff, if you want to take the, we'll take the question, and then we'll ask Mr. Grace to present the sheet.
Yeah, I just wanted to circle back in property. We talked about the idea of taking one of the options, and we discussed option 2B because it was kind of like the all-in, it gives you everything you want, and breaking it out over a longer period of time to do it as discrete projects. I think there were a couple of key points that the engineering team shared with us about doing that, that you can't take the $170 million project cost and extrapolate The 170 million dollar project cost and extrapolate that into projects. It's actually, there's a, there's a. Consideration of the project cost goes up, right? Could you talk a little bit about how if you took the HVAC project, for example? And you did the baseline scope of the HVAC project, when you come back to. Add on a new building area in two B, there's a new wing of classrooms, that HVAC cost would. Have to be added in a second time for that new wing, right? So there's some, I don't want to say it's duplicative, but it is a little bit duplicative. You pay for things sometimes. More than one time when you break it out like that.
Uh, in terms of the hard costs, I don't know that that would necessarily be the case. I think. Obviously, we would not replace systems in phase one that we know five or six years down the road we're going to touch again. I think the duplication of of costs would be in your soft costs, um, something as simple as your advertising costs, your professional fees, your. Construction testing and the types of things that come along with. The approval process or the the um, the soft costs associated with it. Obviously, just from an inflation standpoint, the overall project cost will increase as as you guys had mentioned tonight as well. You know, you you lose that economy of scale, um, you, there's more of a potential for. Not system conflicts, but as a public bid, we need to make sure that we have competitive bidding and we do that by having. Multiple vendors listed, multiple products listed. And as you move further down the line, your um. Ability to mesh different types of equipment together, maybe different building management systems together. Becomes more limited and along with that, prices tend to increase. So um, there are multiple factors why the project would be more expensive spread out over a number of years. Those are just some of the key factors off the top of my head that I can I can think of.
Yeah, I just, I think it's important for the board to be aware that you're going to talk about these cost estimates again and sort of walk us through them, but. We can't take this and extrapolate it to a longer term project. These are designed to be a a single project executed over a three to four year period. Where construction starts and is finished and when it's finished, and there's no break in that construction cycle.
That's accurate. Yes.
You're not going to take 128 million dollars and divide it by 10.
Exactly.
Okay.
And the other, I guess the other question is, we had asked if it was possible to have you give us some information related to breaking out projects over time. So will you be able to provide that information? Obviously not tonight. I don't mean to.
Yeah, certainly, we we can do that um, as long as we have some general direction based on the presentation. Tonight, as far as what the overall final. Building will uh look like, you know, if 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 we're saying that two A, two B is completely off the table at this point, we can focus more so on. The the building as it currently stands, that would be a tremendous.
Help.
Benefit for us to know exactly. To to give you guys the most comprehensive information, if we know what the end goal realistically can be, we can definitely. Break those down into uh recommended phases.
Okay, so I know we had asked for that in property, and I just, I think it's really important maybe to hold on that. To answer your question, and then also because I think that. The administration needs to circle up a little bit more on the financial piece so that we can define the financials a little bit. Better, maybe, and then come back to you with that.
Sure. In the meantime, we can certainly start thinking about all options and what maybe makes sense from a phasing and implementation standpoint. When it gets to a point where you guys have combed through the information and say, you can just drop. Options two and and two A, two B, whatever, we can make the adjustment at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Perdue?
I just have a quick follow up question, Ms. Graff, and maybe I missed something because when I'm looking at this 10 year financial projection model. I. I just want to clarify, when you reference two B, are you thinking two B in reference to the high school? Are you referencing two B in reference to the? 10 year financial projection model, because I I just don't see what option. Two B is on the table when I'm looking at this um financial projection, because. Where are we getting the money from if I'm only looking at? I just want to make sure, did I miss something? Because I just don't see, I don't see the vision at all.
So recognizing that property committee met before financial. So we didn't have the financial information at property. So in the absence of the information related to how much the district could borrow and over what duration. We we had asked if we have to break it into projects and space them out over time. Let's look at getting the district everything that that we want. Over a longer timeframe, which would be two B. And if that means we have to break it into five projects, let's do that. Let's see what that looks like. And that's to my point. I think that's why we're, we need to go back and hold on doing that work. I don't. Think it's worth the engineer doing that work now and then coming back to us with options we can't afford. At the time, we didn't know.
And that's why I just, I just thought maybe I missed something because I was like. And that's why I asked, because we have a model that referenced a two B. For finance, and then we also have a high school. Option two B. I just wanted to make sure because. I just looking at this number, it looked like, what are we at baseline? We're in between baseline and one A, and then we haven't even. Talked about the central administrative offices, and that wasn't included here in this. 10 year projection, so I feel like we're financially. This is looking very um sad. But maybe you guys see something else, so I'll.
Yeah, Ms. Graff.
I I I apologize, Josh. I don't mean this with any disrespect. It's nothing. I'm just wondering why we're having Josh present, because to Ms. Perdue's point. I'm I'm not, I don't, I, I don't understand what I'm missing. It says. High school renovation, if I use Ms. Steffi's numbers, 125 million. And I know already that one A is 128 million. I don't understand why we're. Having Josh spend time on these other options when we know, based on this. In the 10 year window, we can't do any of that. So I I don't understand why we're not focused on what we can do. And what small projects this board. Not small, sorry, that's not the right word, but what projects this board can take on within the. Capacity that we have over the next couple of years. I. I I've I've lost the logic.
Yeah, there's there's there's. If if the board wants him to present the information that he prepared, uh, do so, but we we had discussed, I believe, at the last. A board meeting, there was a discrepancy between the number of classrooms that we were estimating. Uh, for the two A and two B option. And basically, what he was able to do is come back and um. You know, create an update for you so that you know what those those changes are. And I believe it was a difference of maybe $7 million. Is that right, Mr. Grace?
Yes, give or take. It was.
So I mean, that's as much as he can.
Yeah, but we can't afford it, so I just don't understand. So I, just to, just for purposes of time, and Josh, I apologize. It's not disrespect towards you. I'm just.
And honestly, I don't.
Understand what we're doing.
Part of the point for coming back tonight was um, just to respond to any questions or comments regarding additional breakdown of budget. You guys have seen uh in these meetings in this setting, a one page summary. The purpose of last week's committee meeting was to kind of show the backup of how we arrived. At not only the baseline, but all the other options. We went through in pretty granular detail, so I'm happy to share any other backup information. That we have uh for the sake of tonight's discussion, we can skip uh the detail. But whatever information you guys need from a detailed breakdown, we're happy to provide to the district.
Yeah, I think it's just important that um you know that you have an updated uh projection here in front of you. And so you can you can see that. And so if, in fact. There was uh an appetite for us to look at what was considered to be. A longer term plan, a vision of where where the high school is in the future. With projects that actually will be making more decisions on towards that, you could use that information if you so chose to.
Ms. Claire, can I just jump in here real quick? So I think, you know, sitting at in the audience for the property and and sitting in the finance, I think the thought process was that. We don't know if two B will be the end uh. End solution, but the site. The 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 uh sort of. The elimination, the long term elimination of the west part of the West Wing. Um, and what that would look like is sort of to develop, to give the both the architect and the. Josh and those guys some type of structure, what the long term footprint would be looking like. So it might not be, it it looks like for sure that it's probably not in this 10 10 year plan, right? But the idea was for the footprint to be done that way with the sort of the vision of whatever board is sitting here. You know, 10 years from now. So, you know, maybe it's still a waste of time if that's the belief of the board, but I think that was the direction that the property and finance was providing. Was to give a direction of what would it look like from a site perspective, because that's a big portion of the cost. And to design in in anticipation of getting that place. Because if it turns out that we're staying with a baseline or one A or one B. And we have no vision of actually ever doing two A or two B. Then the footprint of the of the traffic would have to be different, right? And that's fine. That's what they'll design. So maybe we have to get to that point of making that sort of directional, but I. It it, I don't think it was a lost cause to sort of for the stretch. From an aspect of of why we were looking at it that way. But I don't know if anybody else sat at those meetings one day.
May I just ask Mr. Winters a question off that? So so when you say 10 years, do you do you really mean more than that? Potentially, like 20 years or?
Yeah, well, but but honestly, uh, we didn't know, right? So um, and it could be shorter, you know, there's other, you know, there's a lot of assumptions that are on the back page eight here, right? So there, it's it's a very assumption based. Long term projection, right? It's based on Act One being at 3.2, the appetite to go to Act One year after year of the different boards, right? It goes on what happens with contracts and what type of attrition has, what we can do to bring down costs, operational costs in different areas. You know, there's so many other things that are going to affect these finances, the finances over those 10 years. I'm not saying we can or can't. It might be 20 years, right? If it's gonna be 20 years, then it probably does seem sort of. New to look at two B at this point, but we don't know. So I think that's, we'll have to mull over and and discuss that, but I think that was the sort of the thought process. The meetings last week did not know if it could be done in six, 10, 20, right?
Thank you for all that. I appreciate that.
Ms. Kangkrow?
You know, I I think it's, we have to have a responsibility to be. Planning this at a 10 year, not go beyond that, what our capability is. So in truth, Devin, I feel like you're tasked with. You know what we could do financially each year. Our responsibilities of. High school renovation is very clear, the nine, the 30, to the 33 each year. You know, you've sat with us for this past year and a half. Our our wants, our needs, but what has to be done. So. I think the task is really now on you, what the phasing could possibly be with your creativity and your team. Because I don't, I I personally don't want to do anything with a vision beyond 10 years because it's not fair to the board or the never got it done. But so that's where I kind of feel like, you know, we did lead if we went a different direction when we were in that. Property committee meeting, thinking that we could go to that two B, but I don't, I don't want to do that. And personally, I don't want to. To do that. So that's my opinion.
Any other, any other comment, Ms. Graff?
Yeah, I I just have one more clarification, and and maybe Mr. Winters can answer answer this question. Can I, can I take year two 35 million borrow and put it in year six and then start borrowing in year three at 35 million? So I could borrow. Year three, four, five, six, seven, that gives me 150 million over a one, two, three, four, five year period. Can I do that? Ms. Steffi, can I do that? And I know that's not what you're, you modeled, and and I understand, but do you understand what I'm getting at?
I think it's. Similar to the question you asked earlier, you can push off the borrowing as long as you keep the capacity in there.
So I can push it off, but can I take out the gap in year six is what I'm asking. If I push off a year, can I get rid of the gap?
You can, because you just push all the debt back a year.
So at that rate, then I guess I would like to ask Mr. Bradbury, what? High school can you build us for 150 million dollars? That's what I can spend. So my question to the design team is, what can you build us?
Back up a second. I might have misunderstood your question because we're not at, we wouldn't be at 150 million dollars.
We would, because if you take the 35 plus 35 plus 30 plus 25. Years two, three, four, five, plus year seven, because you told me I can use year seven money if I move year two to year six.
But you, but you're, but now you're not considering the 10 year master facilities.
I am. Well, I'm I'm taking 150 because I'm pushing off. Yes, I, you're right. I am not considering that. So I'm going to ask the question still because I still want an answer because I think then you have to decide where where you want to spend your money.
You have to decide where you want to spend your money.
Right. But I also have 15 million in year one that I didn't spend yet, so I could put that into my master facilities plan for at least the first couple of years.
Correct.
So I have a little bit of fluff in that number.
Little bit. Now, I wouldn't say fluff, but you could reallocate the projects, like you could force the projects back.
So so I guess, so Mr. Bradbury. What high school can you build me for 150 million dollars? That's the.
So we designed a high school uh with all the program needs of the district, and that came in at 212 million.
Right.
So we're looking at significant reductions if you want to maintain your Act One index. Um, and proceed that way. So I I don't know what I can get you for 150 million dollars.
So I I mean, I don't know. I mean, I, we, I guess I should pose it to my fellow board members if there's an appetite for. Asking that question and having you come back to us with what that would look like. Maybe it doesn't have a pool. Maybe it's a smaller footprint. Maybe it doesn't have three gyms. I don't know, but I'm sort of curious to know what that would look like. And whether there's some way to sort of. Use the budget to facilitate the decisions about the design.
I, we can certainly look at that. I don't think you're going to like what you, what we come back with.
Well, it's not, it's not my fault that you've given us really beautiful designs.
Thank you.
I was gonna say, you know, um, but I do think like, that's kind of where I, that's where my head is. In this conversation as we're thinking about it. I'm thinking we now know how much we can spend. My question is, what does that get us? What what can we use that money for to enhance the situation that we have at the high school? And and what what would we have to give up? Because there's obviously going to be things we can't do, and that's fine. I I think we just need to know what that looks like.
And just to to clarify, you're talking about a a project that could be a renovation and addition project for 150 million dollars?
It it could absolutely. If you could build me a brand new high school for 150 million, you'd be a hero, but I understand that's unlikely. And you probably would have to do some sort of renovation project.
Sure.
Yeah, I would say I don't really have an appetite because 100 for for doing that, because 150 million backed in for soft cost and. Escalation and everything, you're talking 110 million probably. So you're you. We're, that's half the size of the the cost that we saw six months ago. So I don't think it's going to materialize in anything that that. We're going to want to go forward with. So you asked the question, I I'm not really interested.
And I would add to what Mr. Winter said, um, that I'd wanted to know how much that would cost us first to do, right? We've put a lot of money into design and I'm I. I'm just not sure I'm willing to spend any more money on design at this additional design at this point. So I'd want to know all those costs upfront before. We even thought about something like that.
And maybe that's, maybe that's the first question, does does um, does the request require a new approval for design work? So you have options that are around 150 million dollars for the additions renovations, right? So you you kind of already know what you can get from that. Now, if we're looking at reducing program and going a different direction. I think that's. Was was that what you're asking for? I I I think, I think we started with a brand new school, like, but but then I didn't.
No, I mean, I I think that um, I I hear the comment about new design. I don't really think we're asking for new design. I think what we're asking is. You have, you have a design, you have breakout costs of various components of that design. You could come back to us and say, if you wanted to build, you know. I don't know, six new classrooms onto the existing building at this price, you could do that with a new pool and, you know, whatever else. And that's where you spend your 100. And that's where you spend your 100 million, you know, that's what you have. And I guess that's just my my mind, I'm thinking we have all the costs already sort of differentiated by area and and item. And we would just need to know sort of what items are available in that budget. And I guess that also goes to Josh's comment about the breakouts on the baseline. Like, he could break out the baseline scope for us so we could see exactly what that looks like. Because at this point, we're going to have to decide if we want to move forward with that or if we want to not move forward with that. The the baseline, if I remember correctly, the baseline doesn't include any new construction.
I said, yes, even the pool doesn't include.
So there's, there's no, there's a, no pool, there's no pool renovation, there's no pool reconstruction?
There's renovation of existing pool spaces and existing spaces within that. There's just no new addition of new auditorium, no conversion of existing auditorium.
Okay.
Ms. Steele?
Yes, sorry. I just wanted to confirm. So warm, safe, dry is warm, safe, dry and keeps, warm, safe and drives the pool, not dries the pool. I said that wrong, but keeps it from leaking, right? Is that what that?
Yes. So any upgrades, repairs, retrofits within the existing?
It's all within the existing building and everything stays. So the pool stays where it stays a pool. It's just no longer as in the state it is currently.
Correct.
Um, okay, thank you. And then I I want to make sure I understand because as the conversation continued, it sounded like Ms. Graff, like I I understood Ms. Graff's request differently because it kind of seems like in order to extend this over a 10-year period, we do need to see a breakout of the warm, safe, dry and whatever options fit within, right? I that's what I would understand because then we have to be like, these go here in this order, right? Am I, I'm understanding that correctly? Because that's what I, right, I don't know, I don't even know if I'm asking a question because it doesn't look like it's coming out clear. So I think I'm understanding that correctly.
I'm going to jump in. We talked, because I agree exactly what she's saying. We talked about phasing, where we're going to make the one area dry. We're moving everybody over here. We talked a lot about the modular classrooms and not getting the modular classroom. So we're going to do this phase, push them over here. We can make the gym be a classroom, this be a classroom. So I do think we're going to have to, you're going to have to come back to us with some discussion on if baseline or one A, in my opinion, with a 10-year projection and showing phasing and trying to reduce some of these costs, like the phasing modular classrooms that we talked about that we were trying to get into, we were going down that way too soon. We have to do it now. Like, can we take that 5 million off that modular classroom and do the phasing of a 10-year and do the project? Could we get a pool in there and change that space? If not, then we need to put a pool in, repair the pool into this baseline because in the baseline is the pool repair in that. So I think we have to look at, in my opinion, baseline and one A with a phasing approach for implementation over a 10-year.
Yeah. So again, if we're going to focus more so on the baseline and or one A, that helps us tremendously with maximizing use of our time to show you what those options are and what the phasing and cost could look like. Just going back to the comment about, you know, can we move money from here to there? And the other thing we need to know is, are there any possibilities of a four-year plan? Or is it a 10-year plan? Because that's obviously going to affect phasing. So i- if we know duration and we know general scope of what part of the building is being disrupted, we we just need a little bit more guidance in helping you guys understand what those phasing implications are.
I think that the the way we've laid out the options is a higher level of the phasing approach to what we're considering. So I would suggest, and and feedback is certainly welcome, that we look at baseline, how to phase the baseline in if needed. We look at how to phase whatever options are in one A. And and you and you and you show what those those phase, you know, you show what the the incremental change would be o- over time till we get to, you know, through the the till we get up until the the two A component. But we can be more detailed upfront, knowing that the things that we got to do first or we should do first are are well are well structured. And maybe there's, you know, more of an estimate on the on the backend type of things because we don't need that much detail now because we're not making that decision. But we certainly know that if we were taking anything to land development or anything like that, we would need a a larger plan to be approved. So I don't know if that makes sense, Josh, but but I think we already have the phases set up, the way the options are listed.
It it does help certainly. And the other thing which you just hit on is is critical is what is the intended exterior improvement scenario at the end of the project? Are we still maybe targeting the two Z? And we apologize for the combination of of option one A, two A and Zs. But is two Z the intended site option with a baseline building option or a one A building option? You know, a mix of maybe the more complex site with the more simplified building footprint. So those are, those are the types of things that I think.
Was there any feedback in property about the site?
Yeah, in property, we were, we were looking for the two Z option. I guess I just, looking at this, even if you did the high school renovation line, the nine, the 30, the 33, I mean, you've covered in years one through five, you've covered your baseline costs. So I don't like, I don't think we need to talk about phasing at that point. It's you have the money, you just have to do it and you can't really spend more than these amounts each year or we're going to be out of sync. But I think we can talk about that at a separate discussion in finance. But realistically, it's not a 10-year plan. It's a five-year plan or a four-year plan because year one is already gone. So years two through five, you you have funding there to do your baseline option. So I think you can take away the question of phasing because you don't really need to do that. Unless I'm misunderstanding.
We should, I think, I just want to make sure that there's a difference between phasing and individual project execution. So we're still going to need phasing.
Sure.
No matter what.
But not separate projects. I'm saying one baseline project that occurs over whatever, years two through five.
Okay.
Or two through four, if you can get it in that short of timeframe and you can not use the extra 17 million in year five, right? Something like that.
Glenn?
Clarification question. The baseline, I believe, does not include the renovation of the pool in place the way the information was presented originally. Is that, do you, do you recall or can you, do you need to come back to me on that?
The the baseline scope does include the existing auditorium area renovations, which Glenn, if you do have that breakdown from last week, would be line items five through eight.
So it is the baseline number that's presented here does include the repair and refurbishing of the existing pool in place.
Correct. Yes.
I want, okay. As far as the phasing question, I think Ms. Steffi doesn't look at the borrowing for the baseline. But I mean, basically, her financial presentation says that we have to phase for all these borrowing scenarios, that we can't. I mean, she didn't do the scenario for the baseline, but I sus- suspect it's going to be pretty close because the borrowing scenario for the 144 says that you're in deficit if you do a normal construction period.
Yeah, if we're doing a three-year construction period or a four-year construction period, it 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 puts more risk on our ability.
I mean, into her, in her financial model, where we're assuming we have 125 million to borrow for the for the school, for the high school, assumes stretching it over a 10-year period. That's not spending 125 million in a three-year construction project. You'd have to significantly modify the 10-year capital plan in order to afford that. Because you'd have to shift the the spending that you're assuming you're going to make for things that we say we're doing in the 10-year plan out beyond the construction phase.
You don't have to jump into it. I.
Yeah, no, to to borrow it all upfront to do it.
You you have to borrow it by 20, 2029, 2030. You're you're borrowing all of high school stuff minus only 4 million at year seven. So we will borrow for high school specific renovation to 2029, 2030. And then we're that minus the 4 million, right? So we could do it in a four-year phase, which would be exactly how long it would take us to build anyway, right? So it's not a 10-year build phase, it's a four-year phase for the high school specifically. But we're going to be borrowing for the next 10 years because we have 10-year projects to do. Am I, am I misspeaking? But yeah.
I think you're, yeah. I think what we're, I think Ms. Graff is saying you can do it something shorter than 10 years, but it's going to have to be longer than two and a half based on this one example here, right? If this could be the example, but to your point, Jen, is that it's 121 million dollars of borrowing for the high school through year five, right? So that becomes a four-year project versus a two-and-a-half-year project, right? So that's all renovation and probably a pool, right? So but that puts a lot of pressure on, I I understand. But the the reality is, is that maybe it doesn't, for the high school itself, need to be stretched over 10 years in itself for replacement of dry and the pool, et cetera. So I think you're both right. It's longer than what we had talked about before. But it doesn't necessarily necessarily have to be 10 years related if you look at a one A option.
Any other, any other feedback or or comments?
Yes, Mr. Winters.
Yeah, just a couple of clarif- clarification questions. You said you took $7 million out of these estimates from a number of classrooms. What was that equated to?
We had removed, I don't know that it was quite that much. It was 7,000 square feet, right, Devin? So.
Because I think, that's why I want clarification.
Because you had the previous.
I think Dr. Zerby said $7 million. I don't have the last week's estimate right in front of me. So I want to get clarification on the number of classrooms reduced. Six. Six.
What was a dollar differential then?
It only factors into two A and two B, and it was about $4 million less.
It's, it's good to know no matter which direction to go. So I would say I, from today, support the one A. Giving the direction to look at the one A and bouncing and moving off of the two two B direction for our consultants, if possible, to keep the the two Z site plan, which may or may not include Mill Road, but I don't know if that's possible anymore because now you're, I I don't think, I think you're going to have to come up with another solution on the on the site plan. But the idea is maximize the parking and traffic flow. And and I think as a board, we have to also think about some of these renovation items and sort of reconsider our alternative priority, our our priorities again, and look at our priorities. So I mentioned the expansion of the classrooms on the second floor. I was told it's $800,000. It's not a a ton of money, but to me, that's still not something we would want to do. It's, so I would like to do some type of review of those at some point to see if we're still in line with those priorities because maybe there is ability to decide to do some reduction in some of these things. Like, I'm not saying this isn't a good example, but is the lunch and learn that we're getting in one A something that can be implemented in the in the facility changes to the library and so forth? I don't know. And is it something that we want? So anyway, my point is, I, that's not an opinion. It's just trying to make sure that we walk through all those things because it's possible we can determine that there are some things here that are not necessary in their renovation because they're not really delivering the result that we want. And the last piece, I guess I ask, it's probably not doable. But if there's any other possibility for solutions around internal flow of the students, be it, I know that then the two A and two B, there was actually a second-floor corridor that took you down towards the, towards the gym. Is there something like that can be done? I, is there other things that could be done? We're going on with a new contract, like a contract negotiation next year with MEA potentially. Is there a possibility we could extend the school day to 10 minutes, which would add another minute for transit time? And to, and allow students to move from the west wing to the east wing? I don't know. There's, there's different things that we can consider, and maybe the corridor is not necessary in that case, right? We just have a little bit of a longer day. Anyway, I, those are the things I ask us moving forward. I think we're making progress. I know it sounds like we go around and around in a circle, but I think we made a lot of progress today. We understand the borrowing potential layout. We understand with confidence with the property committee and the Dr. Sejini, Sejean and Mr. Kenwood have more confidence in that 10-year plan and when the timing of that is for the other buildings. So when we were talking about potentially building a new building, a new high school, the things that I wanted to make sure that we did not lose was educational delivery in the in the same way. Our ability to competitively pay our resources and not to go backwards related to other facilities during that timeframe. So the one A, I think, keeps us in path for all three of those goals. If we were going to make, we're not going to meet those goals, I didn't want to do a new high school. So to me, there, we're making progress on the direction and hopefully we can give a final direction come October.
So so we we're certainly not taking any votes here this evening, but we, but the direction that's on the table, if if I may, we're talking about targeting one A, potentially coming up with a plan to include two Z, potential Mill Road. Is is there anybody in objection to to that direction for the design team? So if there's any objections to.
I just had a question to clarify. The updated cost information includes two Z site improvements in one A and one B, right? The baseline in one A, I'm sorry. I I just noticed that the the costs increased in the baseline. And I, it, the site improvements on one A are now 6.8 million, which makes me think that is the same as one B. So I didn't, I just wanted to double-check that.
Sorry, I'm just combing through our extensive spreadsheet here. So.
And I'm looking, I have two hard copies.
Options one A and one B do not include the full option two site development. That does not factor in until we get to option two A or two B.
So then can you tell me why then the baseline, the site improvements are 4.2 million and in one A they go up to 6.8?
I believe we had included not the Mill Road extension, but the other parking lot number eight.
In the front.
In, which would be the the front area.
Okay.
Under the option, the building option, one A, one B scenario, that was added in.
Okay. Thank you.
And just to clarify, then one A administrative building, knocking that down and putting parking or no?
We, well, we, well, go ahead. Correct. So I understand there may be discussion tonight regarding.
Okay.
Farina, but for the purpose of the budget, that was still included as being demolished and repurposed for parking.
Okay. And so with the recommendation that we're going, the only thing I would add to that is the administration. I know that we're not, we're trying to wait to to select where we're going to look at things later on. But I do think it's kind of crucial to see how, you know, your programming at the high school right now and if we can reduce any, like, improve traffic alone with just our realigning where our classrooms are to some degree to help us. us. So thank you.
Any any Ms. Steele?
I just wanted to first, I want to thank Mr. Winters for sharing what he shared. And I do agree with that. It would be a great exercise to relook at our priorities now that we have more of a direction. But I also just wanted to share a connection I'm making that is probably far down the line, but I didn't want to forget to mention it. Where whatever direction we go in, it obviously looks very, very different than where this whole project had started. And I think there needs to be a consideration just later on of communicating with the public of why whatever the plan that we have is is going to create warm, safe environments for the students because there was a high school planning committee, there were tours at the high schools. There was a lot of work that led up to the design of a new high school. And I think that it would be good to just kind of put down the line communication because there were a lot of there was a lot of people in the community who wanted more than 1A. So I think that there should be like some communication, just plant like just for a later time, but I think that that would be a good thing to keep an eye on.
That's a that's a good request. We'll take care of that. So again, what we what Mr. Winter said suggested is a direction towards 1A and 2Z as per the site. Are there any other? Any objections to that at this moment in time?
I I think that we probably need to just have a refresher on what is included because there may be things that we want to remove and substitute other things for. Ie, maybe we don't, maybe it doesn't include a pool renovation, maybe it includes some other renovation. I don't know. I'm just as an option, I don't if I remember correctly on my sheet, 21A included the new pool renovations of the library. No, it only included the pool, but it didn't include the library renovations, the auditorium band or the science labs. So it we may want to do a swap and, you know, give up a pool in exchange for science and learning centers that we want. I don't know, but I think it's worth a discussion for the board before we decide that like, yes, we like the 1A option the most.
I'm sorry, anybody in objection to having us come back next week and outline that in more detail? Everybody good with that? Yes, Ms. Purdue?
I don't have an objection, but I think it will be good when we get it next week. Also, just to look at the timeline based on having to make a decision in October, if that's impacted or not, or if that timeline is still feasible, just because, I mean, if we're thinking about looking at our options or reassessing our priorities, I just want to make sure the board will have enough time to be able to make a decision.
Excellent point. We've already started talking about how we might be able to adjust the schedule. We'd like to be able to talk about that tomorrow, and then hopefully by next week we can provide that update. Any Ms. Graff?
I was just thinking it might be it might be best to do baseline and then sort of the breakout of the other additions we could incorporate with the baseline with some associated costs. So that way, we know the baseline is included in 1A, 1B, 2A, 2B. So then you could pick and choose what you want to add for the additional costs. But we all we all agree that the baseline is something that is super important to do. So I think that's something we can agree on.
Any any other comments? All right. Thank you. Next on underneath this same topic, we do have the Mathacton High School Campus Planning Central Administrative Offices. So we asked Dr. Sajini to present an update on a general recommendation associated with the administrative offices. There was as a result of discussion that we had at last month's meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Continuing with those updates, tonight, the administration will provide an update on central administrative office planning as part of the larger Mathacton High School campus planning process. The presentation will review current needs, potential options for relocation, and conclude with a recommendation that reflects both immediate priorities and long-term considerations. Next slide, please. After reviewing the available options and considering both financial and operational impacts, the administration recommends that the central administrative offices that we commonly refer to as the Farina Administration Building remain in a maintenance mode for the next six years or so. This approach is based on several key factors. No immediate cost savings or benefits are achievable that would substantially support the initial projects within the larger master high school renovation plan. The current roof and building systems can be maintained without major investment in the short term. Parking needs can be addressed with the construction of what's been called Lot B on the in the planning of the site process. And resources that might otherwise go toward leasing or purchasing space for the central administrative offices should be directed instead towards the high school renovation itself. Next slide, please. If you recall, all proposed high school campus renovation options involve the leveling of the Farina Administration Building. The central offices administrative offices require a minimum of 11,800 square feet plus parking for approximately 40 staff and visitors. The district data center under all of these options would be relocated into the high school. Importantly, the administration building is home to student registration, and its central location near the high school continues to make it well-suited for accessibility to our families all across the district. Next slide, please. This has been mentioned several times before, but state law prohibits the construction of new administrative buildings unless they are part of a school facility. As such, the primary options to us then are remaining in the current location with short-term maintenance, followed by eventual renovations that have been estimated at approximately $3.5 million. Incorporating administrative offices into the high school is part of the broader master plan. Leasing commercial office space that could be between 225 and $300,000 per year to lease or purchasing that commercial space for roughly $1.9 million, but that 1.9 million in purchase price would not include the additional costs of potentially fitting out that space. Next slide, please. Two potential relocation scenarios were examined, and they have been mentioned all along the way. At Arcola, there are approximately 4,400 square feet of space available in what's been commonly referred to as the cave on the second floor. However, there are certain things that we need to consider about that space. The area currently is used for staff workspace, student projects, and also for reading intervention. Perhaps equally important and logistically imperative, the campus is already congested with parking challenges and ideally administrative offices would require a separate entrance for safety and security purposes, elevator access to ensure ADA compliance, as well as dedicated visitor parking, all of which are features not feasible in the Arcola footprint. The other possibility that was mentioned is the high school, and incorporating central administration could reduce classroom capacity by up to six rooms, though though those spaces may not be contiguous. New construction to accommodate administration would cost approximately $450 per square foot, in addition to requiring separate entrances and elevator access again in the general area of wherever the administrative offices would be located on the high school within the high school proper. With current utilization at 73.5%, there is some flexibility, but it comes with trade-offs for instructional space, and that secure entrance and elevator access still become very important. Next slide, please. So full circle, for these reasons, the administration recommends keeping the central office in maintenance mode for the next six years. This allows the district to concentrate financial and planning resources on the high school master renovation plan while continuing to monitor future cost benefit opportunities for administrative office relocation. This approach ensures that the immediate focus remains on students and instructional facilities while still maintaining operational stability for the district's administrative functions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sajini. Any questions from members of the board to my left? And again, I think it's important, as Dr. Sajini mentioned, that unless the design team comes back and says, hey, there's a there's a financial benefit or there's an operational benefit to have that leveled, I mean, that may change the direction of this of this conversation. But other than that, this is what we presented. Mr. Winters?
Yeah, a couple of clarifications. Oh, my gosh. Clarification questions, please. The trailers at Farina are in good enough shape to last six years?
I can't assure you of that. That's something that we would have to investigate further as part of the maintenance of the the facility.
Okay. And then you used options for purchase or rent, and you had referenced 11,500 square feet needed.
1,800, yes.
And then you priced it at 15,000 square feet. Was that because of why?
Well, I don't think we can guarantee that leasing space of exactly 11,000 square feet is going to be.
I understand, but okay. But 12,000 might have been fair. But that's it. The bottom line is it's a significant operational expense that we don't want to take on during this time period when we're borrowing and doing this many projects on facilities.
Well, if we were if we were spending 220 some thousand dollars a year towards the lease of space for the administration, we could be putting that money towards the, you know, spending more money on the actual borrowing process and taking up, you know.
Yep. And then the decision to move the data center, I know you explained to me before that it's not really that big of a space, but that will be incorporated into 1A now and not a new space in the projections?
If we were going to do 1A, then yeah, that I would think.
And the projections of the steps. Okay.
Glenn, did you have any questions?
Just wanted to question the to you look here at a purchase of 15,000 square feet commercial space of 1.8, 1.9 million versus the construction of new space is 6.7 to include it in the high school. Can you explain that significant difference in cost per square foot or area?
I think you take the square footage, 450.
I can do the math. That's not the point you're trying to that tells me that's four times more expensive to build than to buy existing.
We 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 received the square foot numbers from a realtor.
That purchase price, I assume, has some type of annual fee, maintenance fee. You're not buying a whole building, you're buying a floor. I don't. Is there operating costs that go along with that purchase price for commercial?
No, not including the 1.9 million. That would just be purchased. We would need to operate the building after that.
But it wouldn't include like the fit, you know, getting it prepared.
Yeah, understood. I guess just the point is I'm kind of surprised at the significant cost difference. I mean, I understand that where commercial office space cost pricing is today.
We we we've been told like industrial space is doing well in terms of leasing and purchasing, but, you know, commercial office space is still tanked as a result of COVID.
Depressed market, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
So to to your point, I mean, it would it's it's probably the best time to buy commercial space if we were going to do that. I think that's I mean, that's the. Other questions, comments, Ms. Kankro?
No, I mean, generally, I'm just disappointed that we couldn't do this because I feel like it would have allowed us parking in that area, give the central administration a better working environment. I've the the Farina is old and it's dated, and we want to attract administration there and families go there and, you know, it just there's an it just is not up to par that I'd like the community to see our leadership be in of all of the whole thing. So that just makes me just disappointed that we cannot work this out to get a better environment there. It's.
I just want to be clear that it doesn't mean we can't. I I'm just saying that if if we if we had to put a priority towards the use of resources, that's that's what I'm trying to say that. Other comments, questions, Ms. Steele?
Just a really quick one. Which lot is Lot B?
Lot B would be immediately above the auditorium area in what is now grassy space.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Kankro?
I do feel like we need to look at the trailers, though. I think they're awful. They don't look right, and no one should be working in the trailer for years on end with no projection in sight. And it's just, yeah. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments, Ms. Graff?
Yeah, I'm gonna I'm gonna reiterate what Mr. Winter said. At 12,000 square feet at $15 a square foot, which I think is a pretty healthy number, it's at $180,000 a year versus the 325 to 300,000. So it is a significant difference in terms of if we're looking at that over the course of the year. And there's no comparison in here on operational costs. I have to imagine that that costs us a fair amount to to manage, especially with those trailers for heating and cooling costs. And the fact that we don't have any parking for visitors, because I've been there and had people say they had nowhere to park, they weren't sure where to park. So like, there are some things that are not necessarily just dollars and cents considerations that I think to Ms. Kankro's point, we need to be looking at this. I am I am far from saying this assessment is sufficient for me to say we should not consider moving admin off-site. And I would also ask our engineering team to weigh in on that space could be really important to the project. If they're doing renovations and work on site, they're going to be taking up parking spaces on site, they're going to be taking up some of our space on site that we're now using for other things. That that additional square footage for space may be very, very important to us moving forward. So I don't think that we should be quick to jump and say, you know, because of this cost, it's it's prohibitive. I think it just needs to be considered in the bigger picture with all the other costs.
And Ms. Graff, that's exactly what we're saying here as part of number one, if there's no if there's no immediate benefit. And I think we need to do that study. We've talked a lot about how it could benefit us. But but you're absolutely right. Any other comments or questions on that? Seeing none, thank you, Dr. Sajini. I believe, bear with me one second. I believe that ends our guests and scheduled speakers for this evening. I will say that we did have one public forum where we had 12 members of the public visit us. We will provide an update after the next public forum, which is scheduled for Thursday this week. Are there any other questions on high school matters or anything presented for this evening? Mr. Winters?
Dr. Sajini referenced high school utilization. I assume we're going to get more about that later on in either September, October. Is that correct? Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Clary?
The public forum that you're hosting on Thursday, is it going to incorporate what we've talked about tonight? Or is it like, what's the how are you proceeding on Thursday?
Yeah, we we're going to be talking about that on Wednesday, but likely we should be incorporating some of the discussion that occurred here this evening as more directional in terms of where we're where we're going. And it did not at the previous meeting.
That's why I'm asking, I assumed, yeah.
We will move on to rest of the agenda for this evening. We'll have Board Honorable and Emma Awards next week. We have reports as well. In addition to that, we will introduce and appoint student board representatives. With that, we will take on the fiscal items. Ms. Duffy?
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. There are nine fiscal items for your consider. There are four fiscal items for your consideration. Item 10A, list of bills. 10B, treasury report. 10C, budgetary transfers. And 10D, service agreement, approved service agreement with surpassed behavioral health for consultation and therapy services for the 2526 school year as attached.
Any questions from Ms. Duffy to my right? Any to my left? Seeing none. Move on to personnel item. Dr. Sajini?
Thank you, Dr. Zerby, for the consideration of the board this month. There are the following personnel items. There are three resignations classified. All of them are resignations for retirement, including Quentin Swift, custodian at Arcola after 25 years of dedicated service to Mathacton, Kristen Bar Jones, personal care assistant at Arcola after 20 years of dedicated service to Mathacton, and Bridget Nemirovich, custodian at the high school after 21 years of dedicated service to Mathacton. The Mathacton family is grateful to Quentin, Kristen, and Bridget for the many ways in which they made our schools a safe and clean and welcoming learning environment for our
students to learn and grow, and we wish them the very best in their well-deserved retirement. There are eight employments classified, Jeremy Remmel, bus assistant at Transportation; Eileen Omicham, power professional at Arrowhead; Matthew Comer, part-time office assistant at Skyview; Haley Christman, part-time office assistant at Worcester; Robin Vagnoni, power professional at Arcola; Dana Fornacola, power professional at Arcola; Teresa Lambert, personal care assistant at Arcola; and Hunter Pizzo, monitoring assistant at the high school. We welcome Jeremy, Eileen, Matthew, Haley, Robin, Dana, Teresa, and Hunter to the Methacton family. There's one change of status professional, John Hudson from Health Physical Education Instructor at Arcola to Assistant Principal Teacher on Assignment at Arcola. We thank John for taking on this role. There are two uncompensated leaves professional, Dana Visanka, eighth grade reading instructor at Arcola, and Marley McGuire, speech language pathologist at Worcester for the dates listed. There are two uncompensated leaves classified, Fallon Heinz, personal care assistant at Arcola, and Mary Ann Reich, power professional at Skyview for the dates listed. Supplemental contracts for sponsors, pupil service department items, A Fall Coach and Mentors, and two additions to the classified substitute list, Norman Turner III, custodial casual on-call, and Adriana Amici, support staff casual on-call. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sorgini. Any questions to my left? Ms. Perdue?
Thank you. I just have one in reference to 11H for the Assistant Principal for the TOA. How long are those typical for or how long do we think this one may last for?
Likely for several months. We have engaged the process of hiring a new Assistant Principal with the retirement of Mr. Thompson, effective actually today. So we are going through that process. We anticipate a hopeful bringing to the board in October, a successful finalist in the event that that individual does currently work in another school district in Pennsylvania. We would expect a 60-day hold, which would take us into January for the start date.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions to my left? Seeing none to my right? Ms. Cleary?
Dr. Sorgini, the 11M, the mentors supplemental contracts, when I opened up that attachment, all the pay, the pays were different? Is that just based on where that individual falls within the MEA contract?
Not within the MEA contract when they joined us and how long they're going to be a mentor, so whether it's a half year or full year, and additionally, if it has not been the entire year, if they're starting somewhere later in the school year when these individuals start.
Thank you.
Seeing any other questions for that? Thank you, Dr. Sorgini. No items under curriculum and programs policy. There are several policies under 13A for first reading for your consideration next week. There are no policies for approval under second reading, and there is one notice of intent to repeal, policy number 808.2, cafeteria point of sale. Are there any questions or comments on matters related to policy?
Can I ask about the 808.2?
Yeah, so the reason why we have it on the agenda as an intent to repeal is because it's covered. Some of it is moot now and not applicable anymore, and then the rest of it was covered in the other two policies that you see there, 808.1 and 808 Food Services.
Thank you.
And that needs to sit on for two consecutive board meetings before approval. Yep, thank you. Under other, we have gifts and donations. Approve the generous gift from Mr. Ross Chapman towards the backpack program, the amount of $52.28. Approve a generous gift from residents of the Shenondale community for the woodland nurse suite with identified student items in the amount of $350. And the third, approve the generous gift from residents of Shenondale for Eagleville nurse in the amount of $350. There are some transportation, the driver of Matthew Jabar, and that ends the items for next week's consideration. I'll turn it over to Madam President for dates, members' calendar.
Dates for board member calendar is listed. Would just note that September 24th next week is on a Wednesday and not a Tuesday for the regular board meeting at this location. Other meetings are there listed. Anything for old or new business? Seeing none, we'll move to the courtesy of the floor. The Board of School Directors will now provide an opportunity for residents to make comment on matters that are or may be before the board. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, and the Board of School Directors may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments. You could submit your questions via email, information@methacton.org.
Jim Malick, Worcester. I'm going to say it again, I've been saying it for three years. You can't afford it, you couldn't afford it, you can't even afford 1A. I don't know what you guys are thinking about. You know, what you're supposed to be thinking is what do you absolutely need? Not like, oh, here you go, guys, we got 150 million, go see how you can spend it. It's absolutely, the thought process is ridiculous. What do you need? What do we need? We need HVAC, number one, 18 million according to your engineers. What else do we need? That's what you, that's what you guys should be thinking. Instead of Jen's like, oh, here you go, we'll give you the money, figure out how it's going to work. Same thing with Ms. Graff. I don't get that approach. Ms. Graff, you told the consultants that if they could build you, and actually you said build me, a school for $150 million to be a star, they're going to build you your own private school? I hope you pay for it. You know, they're building us a project, not you personally. You know, the consultants, if you give the consultants 150 million and tell them, spend it, they're going to spend it. You can't afford 150, you can't afford 120. Ms. Kangrow, have you thought about the bare minimum? Have you thought about what you absolutely need instead of saying do 1A? Same thing with you, Ms. Graff. I mean, you still want 1B. If you can get 1B, you get 1B. You can't get 2B. Okay? You cannot afford 2B. Can I say it again for you? You cannot afford 2B. So do you get it? Quit thinking about 2B and spending 170 million bucks and finding ways to, let's spread it out over 10 years. Because the problem you have is your Bureau Veritas FCI study that shows that Mr. Sorgini's presentation about the master plan is not correct. You're not spending enough. In 10 years, according to this, you need a new woodland and a new Worcester Elementary because the FCIs are in the school is basically done, time to rebuild. So your master plan is off by, you know, you need two new schools, probably off by 50 million. So why isn't somebody, you know, you guys love Bureau Veritas, go look at the FCI analysis.
Thank you.
John Andrews, Lower Providence. My thoughts on high school renovations. Inputs are needed from the public, staff, and students as it is an undertaking for the next 50 years. First public forum had only a dozen of the public. I call that a scandal beyond pathetic because of the paucity of advanced notice. Directors queried about publicity in August to no apparent avail. I have long argued for pages of text, not a throwaway postcard. Perhaps there was no publicity because the project isn't ready for view yet, and this evening certainly supports that. Most of the improvements need simple and clear justification of cost and benefit documents. For instance, defend an eight-lane pool versus a six-lane pool. Detail why a new auditorium with what size and features is needed. There is harm, not benefit, to relocation of Farina in the high school. It needs parking spaces and shuts down admin when MEA strikes. About parking, why can't grade 11 students ride our buses? There is no plan yet for phasing contractors in modular spaces. Students see a need for a new second-floor corridor. Zerby is anti-it. We deserve serious Schrader input on it, either supporting it or knocking it down. Perhaps grade nine could be at Arcola during construction. Arcola is at under 60% capacity. Replacing a two-story classroom wing to fix eight small classrooms makes no sense when we have over 100 small classes. And I presume that the small classrooms are currently in use. What, exactly what law prohibits new Farina construction? A law prohibits, that law, if it is accurately described, is ridiculous. Placement in front of Eagleville appears possible for new construction. And the soon-to-be vacant Lower Providence municipal building is a possible replacement for Farina. About the apartment, why here if it is for post-grade 12 use? Doesn't the MCIU already have an apartment? And I think it's good and constructive of the recent involvement of Doctors Regina and Sorgini in all of this activity.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation this evening. I thought it was very interesting and a lot of good conversation. Thank you for taking on these difficult decisions regarding the high school campus. The majority of the community that I've spoken to recognizes the need for improvements and knows that this is a huge undertaking, so thank you for handling that. I have a question. We have a new Director of School Security and Safety. I'm just curious, in the conversations that are taking place, is that director directly inputting what we're looking at in terms of the high school campus and what is in the tenure plan for the buildings? I personally have some concerns about Worcester Elementary and how the front of that building is designed and, you know, how access is in that school. And just as we're talking about the high school with everything that's going on in the world right now and how schools are targets of violence, you know, what are we, what all is in place? And I know it's something that you've been talking about for years, but just right now in this day and age with this expert now on staff, you know, what are we looking at in terms of security when we're talking about renovations, especially security during renovations? Those types of things have been, were in my mind while you were discussing things here this evening. And just one other comment I'd like to take the opportunity to make since I'm here, I just want to compliment the schools, the building principals, the teachers and the staff for their well-done back-to-school nights. I know they're not all over yet, I still have some more to attend myself, but as a member of the Special Education Alliance Home and School, I've been able to go to multiple back-to-schools, even the ones that are not for my kids. And I just can't stress enough how professional and genuinely excited to see the parents, to interact with parents, to make those connections that the staff are showing. The conversations I had last night at Arcola were just extraordinary, and it is my youngest that's a student there. I kind of know a lot of the teachers that are there, but those new teachers, they're full of energy, they are excited, they are fully engaged. It was just awesome. It was really, really awesome to see. So since I'm here, I just wanted to pay them that compliment. They're really representing Methacton well and just making me excited that my kid's a part of it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing none, other for courtesy of the floor. Any comments or questions after the courtesy? All right. Seeing none. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, yeah, sorry. What? Oh, sorry, Ms. Steele.
No, I just wanted to echo what the thank you to the staff and the teachers and the administration for the back-to-school nights. My husband and I have been to more than one, our family spans three schools right now, and they really are well-done. They're really well-done, they're well-attended, and they're extremely professional and very energetic and positive. And my husband did not get lost in the high school as we have a freshman, so the directions were great. So I just wanted to share that. Thanks.
Fantastic. Any other comments or questions? So seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Winters and Mrs. Cleary? Meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.